My name is Dave Tattelbaum. I'm the Chair of the Town Select Board. Two of my colleagues, Sean McDonald and Stan Mickelson, are here, as well as Sean McGinnis, our Town Administrator. And I can't tell you how pleased we are that we're all here. Thank you so much for coming. We've got a lot at stake here. And our goal here was to -- it was quick because we had no choice. As you know, the comment period is over on the 30th of January. And our thought was to try to get as many peoples can together to take advantage. And here you are, we're here. So we're really grateful you showed up. We thought we're going to send around a sign-up sheet if you would sign it. And if you represent the board and where you're from, could you just make a note when you put it through? Do we want an email address or what do we?
Yes. Just a name, your community, and your role in your community or business, and your email.
And if you're a paid volunteer. No, that's okay. So we thought that we would -- and of course, Chris Michio is here from our Board of Health. Chris saves our town on a regular basis. He's fully invested in this issue. He's an expert. He guided our town through COVID in a way with other team members, but in a way that was fantastic. And he has a strength and expertise that really is a buzz none. But we agreed that he'll kind of wait and make his comments toward the end and maybe wrap it up. But our goal here is to share ideas and open discussion. If you want to just raise your hand and start, and we can keep going. We want to make it a free flow of information. We are -- our biggest and highest regret here is that we've been set on fire by the DEP in our view. We've been bunched together with Cape Cod with, as we call it, the geology of a sand that is completely and totally different from our experience on the Buzzards Bay Coast. And we feel that we need -- and we even hire a town attorney here, another expert. Thank you, Anthony. So we're here to try to share ideas and come up with something at the end that we can be useful with because that comment period is over on January 30th. Any other comments? If you want to just simply someone raise their hand and get started with a comment and introduce yourself as you go along, we'll make this work. Yes, sir.
I'm Gregory Clear, lived on Horse Neck Road, homeowner. I've been to one of the previous sessions where they presented what the program is, Options One and Two. Equally, I went up to the first hearing in Lakeville and expressed my concerns to the DEP. I don't believe anybody disagrees with the issue there's too much nitrogen in the water. We certainly don't want the waters around here to end up as deep soup like those pictures we've seen from Florida. However, my concern about the current proposed regulation, Option One dumps the whole problem on homeowners. And it's an expensive problem. You're looking at a number more like 50,000, not 10,000. But more specifically, as far as I'm concerned in this area, I did some looks around, just internet searching. I didn't find anybody that installs home systems. There ain't none. So if I were ordered to put one in, who do I call? There aren't no Ghostbusters. On top of that, there's nobody to service. At the meeting I was asking, in Lakeville, there were several public people that commented that they had some of these similar type systems that they can't get serviced, and frankly, they don't work. They have not achieved the level of reduction that is needed. So my proposal, suggestion to the DEP is to revise this regulation, to come up with funding to do more of the research projects. There are several research systems installed. There's one in North Fairhaven, I think it is. There are two or three of them, or maybe more out on Cape Cod. There are a bunch down in Florida. But they're all research systems that were funded by various educational or government groups to fund it. So we need to come up with a product that they can say, you can do this. The way Title V is written now, yes, I can call in any one of the half a dozen IGNOs, okay, I have to put in this kind of fill, I know I have to have these kind of pipes, I know what the inspector's going to be looking for, they know what they're supposed to do. So that we have something we can deal with. Option One, at the moment, as it's structured, is infeasible, possibly illegal. The only solution, as I sat in my bathtub, that I came up with is, well, install a big tight tank out in my front yard. And every now and again, at whatever frequency would be needed, a truck has to come, pump it out, slap it up to the town sanitation, and pump it out. Well, first, there's a lot of expense on that. Second, you're going to have trucks run all over the place. And the town sanitation center is going to become a truck depot rather than a plane. So in summary, great idea. The proposed regulation is just impractical and we can't do it. Thank you.
Part of the issues that I have with this, number one, is that the data that they're using is over 20 years old. And they're not addressing probably the most causes of the nitrogen load. It's not the homeowners. You know, it's agriculture. It's the composting that DEP allows. And it's fertilization. Everybody wants a nice green lawn. Nobody wants a brown lawn. And that's part and parcel of the problem. So who's going to be the first one to say, no more fertilizing your lawns in my town or my state? Not going to be too many people. But the other problem is this, is that this was done, as far as I'm concerned, almost cloak and dagger. That they've done this in secrecy, they've done this without municipal participation, they haven't asked anybody in the Commonwealth to put this in. And they're really targeting two areas right now. They're targeting the Cape and they're targeting South Coast. Well, eventually, it's going to be all 23 watersheds in this state. That's the entire state. And Western Mass does not know what's coming. And it's been said several times that the soil types on the Cape is far different than the soil type on the South Coast. You have a sand-type soil system on the Cape, and the proposed regulations may work better for the Cape, but they're not going to work in this area, not gravel-based. And DEP needs to be more open. In fact, somebody on the NSA Committee said in the hearing that these type of systems just don't work. But you want to avoid the noise. We're the noise. We represent the noise. And they want to avoid us because they don't want to hear from us. They'd rather just do what they have to do. This basically comes down to this. DEP was sued by the Conservation Law Foundation. This is the result of that. This is a settlement. This is not proposed regulations. This is a settlement to the lawsuit. January 31st or January 30th, the timeframe for these comment period has to end. In February, DEP has to file something with the court for a March hearing date to settle the lawsuit. So it's no -- it is no particular reason. No, let me just change that. The reason for this short-term frame on the comment period is not to hear from the public. It's just to say, we're putting on a dog-a-pawny show because we're going to end up settling this lawsuit anyway. And this is the reason why. I mean, who in their right mind starts a comment period in between two major holidays? Somebody who wants to hide something. Somebody who doesn't want public participation. This needs to be stopped at this level. This needs to go to the governor's office. This needs to be stopped by the legislature. And what we need to do as a region is we need to put pressure on our representatives and our state senators to get off their butts and do something about this. Because as far as I'm concerned, I don't see any action here. The only one I ever saw has any involvement with here is Julian Seer from the Cape, but he was on the NSA Committee. He's in favor of this. So how, I have no idea. But, you know, and the other thing that just -- the other thing that gets -- I know people who work in government, people who run for government, want to make their communities just a little bit better. They want to make sure that the people that they live next to, the people that they live far from, have a better community to go through. And they fight for better government every single day. Well, these guys just totally took that and killed it decades. Killed it decades. They're not doing that. When you have people who are on the Committee, this NSA Committee, stand up in a hearing and say, yeah, I'm for it, this is great, this is one of the best things that ever could happen, we're going to really do this, and not say that they're part of this Committee, why are you hiding that fact? Why are you hiding the fact that you are part of the Committee that promulgated these regulations? Now, this -- there's something stinking at Mass DEP, literally. And it needs to be changed. Chris, am I right? Did the Director of DEP resign?
The Commissioner resigned.
Okay.
Sorry, what was his name?
Martin Suberg.
Oh, no.
Okay, we're going to -- let's make sure that we raise hands just so we can keep the -- it's okay, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
And I'll be brief. My name's Kevin Demaris. I'm the Health Agent in the Town of Free Town. I'd like to just express thanks and gratitude, particularly Mr. Chairman, to the Board of Selectmen and your Town Administrator, and most importantly, to Chris. Been leading the way on this. Unfortunately for me, I tried to get out in front of this, and the indications at the beginning were Free Town wasn't going to be involved in this. And so it was like a, phew, right? But understanding that it's coming down the road. Then you find out that there may be some limited areas within Free Town. So it perked up our interest. So if we're a little late coming to the party, I apologize, but we are here in --
You're right on time.
We're right on time. Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And we're here to support everybody and all their efforts. I'm not going to be redundant. I'm sure some of the comments are going to be the same. I share, and our town shares the same. There's a grave concern to what this is going to do. And I will end my comments this way. I think a lot of us have taken Board of Health training, Health Agent training and all, and understand the basic tenets of what we do and how we do it. And part of that is supposed to -- we're supposed to approach things in a scholarly manner, right? Using the right information and the right tools to gain that information. We're all supposed to also do it. It's not supposed to be punitive. It's not supposed to be injurious to the folks that live in our town. And it's supposed to be reasonable, right? And I don't see -- this does not pass any of those tests. And it goes counter to the tenants of what we are supposed to do as public health officials and local town officials for their community members. So I want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank you folks again for putting this on. And we wholeheartedly support the efforts of this group.
I have just one quick comment.
Sure, sir.
I don't -- my view of this Committee and what we're doing is that we -- I don't want to be seen as some waffling crybaby that we -- all we're doing is complaining. Our interest here is to solve the problem in any way we can and be cooperative. And I think that we need to make sure that whatever statements we come out with, how will we attack this issue, it's because we want the problem to be solved, but in a way that makes sense. And we don't want to take forever either because it -- my understanding is the Cape knew about this 20 years ago. And Sean McGinnis was on the Cape in Barnstable, and they had opportunities to build wastewater plants, and they talked about it a lot but did nothing. So I think we want to help solve the problem, and I think that should be our perspective.
Yeah, allow us to be a part of the solution.
Right, okay. Thank you. Next, anybody? Yeah.
I'm Rose Biggs Bay. I'm a Doctor of Science, an alum at Brown University. I want to say that the reason I reacted that way is because Montigny and --
Chris Markey?
Yeah, Markey, wrote that very nice response, very strong, but sent it to the man who now I find out has resigned. So, you know, Mr. McDonald's comment that, you know, we need our representatives to be effective and follow through, but if they're hitting dead end, you know, they're sending letters to people who then walk, we have a serious issue here, you know. But my concern also is with the science. Again, as you commented, it's over 20 years old in their report that they threw together. It's obviously a quick pull together. They just said, this is our most recent data available, which is ridiculous. There's plenty of new data from the different clean water organizations. And in those clean water reports, actually, there's more nitrogen upstream from -- I live on Gaffney Road. It's supposed to be the worst down at the bottom where at the end of Gaffney Road, but it's not. It's actually worse up at Russell's Mills. And as you know, that water carries around behind the New Bedford Dump, the Dartmouth Dump, be all the way down. So that's a down-flowing influence on the place where they're measuring our nitrogen. So I'm not so sure that our septic systems are completely at fault for all of that. I think there's plenty of other descending influences that could be affecting it. And that's not really discussed in their report in that way. They just sort of say, you know, we have high nitrogen. So I would like to see our towns get together and put together a good proposal that can actually be implemented. I agree with the gentleman from Horse Neck Road that what we're being asked to do, even if we could afford to do it, is there's no specificity to it. You have to have an operational definition of what you mean when you say the best system available. You could go out and buy some elaborate system, have it installed, and then have the state say, oh, actually, next year, we're going to this. So I think we need better definitions, we need better data, we need more recent data. The Westport Water Alliance put together a nice summary showing that their agricultural influences were 30-some percent, and their wastewater was less. And they also showed that they've made progress as a town toward reducing nitrogen, and they gave 2021 data, which is a lot more recent than 20-year-old data. So I would like to see us combine with them and with other towns and put together some good, solid data, and then find out what it is that might work and suggest that over a 20-year period, yeah, maybe we could do that.
Thank you.
Just to add to your comment, I believe the data, the most recent data that you're talking about, says that the septic tanks, you know, that are contributing to the nitrogen problem are about 34% of the nitrogen. And so your comment really is, you know --
Do you introduce yourself?
Did I what?
Would you introduce yourself?
Phil Bartlett. I live on 615 Addisville Road in Westport.
Westport.
Oh, in Westport.
And so, I mean, I remember reading that. So, you know, the point is that another 2/3 of the nitrogen contribution is going into the Westport East Branch, you know, is coming from other sources. And so, I don't -- what's with that? What's being done about those and why is the homeowner or the septic tank, you know, first in line?
Joe Correa, the Accusant Health Agent. To your point, you know, the watershed permit part of this, and I think we all pretty much get a good idea of what it is, is going to push us out 20 years. That's probably what most of the communities would go for in the event that this regulation was ever adopted. That being said, we're all here together now, and we're all stakeholders in this, whether you're a resident, whether you're a community, a farm. There's so many pieces to this puzzle. The sewage treatment plant in New Bedford that just dumps raw sewage on a regular basis, you know, and all these people should be sitting at this table over the next 20 years and figuring out how to reduce nitrogen. We all know we've got a nitrogen problem. This should have happened, to your point, in Barnstable 20 years ago. Well, we've been doing this a long time. We all know nitrogen's been an issue. Just because DEP got slapped, you know, all of a sudden, doesn't mean that they shouldn't take the time to come out. And there's so many groups that we interact with as agents, as Board of Health members, as Select Board members, as Town Administrators. These groups should have brought -- Realtors, you know, it should have been brought to their attention, and this conversation should have been going on. It should start now. What we need to do is really, I think as a whole, talk to our reps and really bring this to a quick end, and then a new beginning and start talking about it. Rather than it being stuffed down our throat, and this is what they're trying to do, is they're trying to get us to start thinking about it in a bad way. But this is not it. I mean, we really need -- we elect them. They should do something for us.
That's it. Anybody else?
Actually, just to follow up. Does anybody know any of the people running these research projects that could come and tell us what they found? I know they're running one over in Fairhaven, I think. There are a couple of projects going on. What have they found?
There's one. Barnstable County has been running one for years, George Hoyfelder. I think, did he retire, Chris? Is he still there?
No, he's still there.
Okay. So Barnstable County, we can contact them to find out. They've been working on it probably the longest, I think.
They have a really nice center, and they opened it up to the public. They're very proud of their work over there with the IA Test Center.
What does that say? Could you?
The innovative -- sorry about that, acquaintance. And that's my pet peeve. So the Barnstable County Health Department has a innovative alternative septic system test center, somewhat nested on the edge of the National Guard base on the -- And that's where they pretty much vet all of these systems that ultimately, you know, get approved in Massachusetts.
Shouldn't we be hearing from them, then, at these meetings? They're doing the research, shouldn't they say, uh?
To that point, we do. You see, this is the groups that we're involved in, that we know all of this that's going on, but yet this has not been brought to our attention. I've been doing this for 10 years, and this has not been talked about formally in any way, shape, or form. You know, and it's just, it's ludicrous to do this all of a sudden. Yep, two months, we're going to do it.
Do they ever open to the public? Can I open to them and say hi there and tell them?
Well, I could reach out to them to see if maybe, you know, they would, you know, and we could let, you know, those know that put their emails down, you know, if they would have a day where the public could go and they could give a tour.
Because I'd love to get some facts, like she said, I want facts.
Well, in reality, based on what Sean's told me, Barnstable's been under fire longer than anybody. And it sounds like they're doing a lot of testing, but they have not a lot of doing. And my understanding, Sean, is they've been talking about a treatment plant for --
Well, so, you know, the Conservation Law Foundation won that suit over a decade ago. And then they started pushing the EPA and DEP, and they started pushing the Cape towns. And I can tell you, particularly on the mid-Cape, it's been an issue for years to talk about soaring and not unlike most communities. They didn't want to pay for it when they could have done it, and then every 10 years would come around and say, well, we could have done it for half that price 10 years ago. It's a typical -- so that most of the Cape towns ignored the issue. And the only ones that really took action were the ones that, you know, they had a significant economic impact, like Province Town went and moved forward, Chatham, with their town center. So I think you kind of see that. And Barnstable was building out just because it's more urban. And I think, you know, this is the result, is that the towns kept ignoring it, ignoring it. And they'd do as little as possible. They'd create their comprehensive wastewater management plans, but they would never put them into effect. It would go to town meeting, and town meeting would vote it down. They didn't want to spend the money. So then, you know, particularly where I was in Yarmouth, town meeting was like, well, what are the repercussions? Nothing's happened. Well, why are we going to pay for this? So they didn't pay for it, and nothing happened. Finally, I think DEP's had enough, and they're getting pressure from, you know, above them, and they're saying, well, we're just going to implement tough, this figure-it-out towns. And they're taking this heavy-handed approach. It's not well-thought-out. Chris has talked about it many times. There's so many ancillary issues that go along with what they're trying to implement that they have not thought out at all, and people are going to pay the price, and it's going to fall on towns to make these decisions that they're like, well, who thought about this? No one thought about, you know, 20 or 100 different things. But I think they're just trying to kind of hammer it forward and deal with it later. And I agree. But that's kind of the, in my opinion, the history of how we got to where we are. It's really, you know, not to blame the Cape, but, you know, it really started there, and they ignored it. And they were successful in ignoring it for a long time. They thought they could keep going, so now this is what it is.
One of our advantages, our Town Administrator's also an engineer by trade, so we get it inside.
Yeah.
So I have a really quick comment. And I'm plain and simple person. This is nothing but a backdoor deal that they made to help the Cape and bail out the Cape, period. And they're doing their best to do it in the simplest way and paying no attention to anything else but that project they want everybody to buy into. That's all it is. It's well-thought-out. We're making light of their thought process. I truly believe that the thought process was there all along. They want us to believe that, oh gee, we just thought of this. It's been on the books, they're ready, and this is how they're getting back, and they got a lawsuit to deal with. So they made a deal. And we have to suffer, and they figured that we would bail them out. I'm not bailing them out.
So I have a --
Phil Weinberg, I'm on the Westport Board of Health. I guess I just wanted to start by clarifying, or responding to some of the comments to kind of clarify, which is that there are systems that work and have been approved. And DEP has issued approvals for multiple systems. You have to have 50 systems in operation to get a general use approval. And they write very extremely detailed approval letters as to what the performance standards are. You can be provisional, in which you need to have 25 systems to get provisional approval. And then you can be a pilot system. And there are all those three layers out there. And the Barnstable Test Center is a place that technology companies who want to get into that process bring their systems to get tested and to be able to demonstrate. So there's a lot of systems out there that are functioning now. And in the town of Westport, we have a local bylaw that requires new construction, you know, homes that are newly constructed to install nitrogen-reducing systems consistent with DEP approvals, which is 19 parts per million of nitrogen. The best technology, quote, "best available nitrogen-reducing technology" is a process that DEP uses in other programs to push technology vendors to improve their performance. Because if you've got the best technology, then everybody has to buy from you, and you've got an incentive to invest and create new technology. And so now everybody, and so now new vendors and existing vendors are going to improve their technology, hopefully, and reduce the amount of nitrogen going in. And so that's all the good thing. I think the other thing, and maybe this responds a little bit to the other comments, is that, you know, we're all -- so DEP is looking at a watershed-by-watershed basis, right? And the idea is that all the nitrogen from all the sources are flowing into the estuary within that watershed. And some of them cross jurisdictional boundaries, so some of Dartmouth's flows into the Westport River. But generally speaking, we're a little bit of islands, you know. So, you know, what's happening in New Bedford is probably not affecting the Westport River or the Slocum River. I don't know about Slocum, but I'm pretty damn sure it's not affecting what's happening in the Westport River. And there are portions in the town of Westport that are outside the watershed, and they're flowing into other sources. So, and I think that the reason that DEP went this way is that, and what the lawsuit is about, is that, you know, DEP has always gone after the wastewater treatment plants. And they took the position that all the discharges from all the other sources that people have talked about were not -- they didn't regulate that. They just issued permit to centralize wastewater treatment plants. And then the environmental agencies said, you're wrong about that legally. You have to address discharges from septic systems because you regulate septic systems. I mean, DEP doesn't regulate farms, they don't regulate fertilizers. It's a little bit of the, I'm a hammer and you're a nail. So they're not, you know, and this is what they regulate. And they said, you have to, if the biggest sources of nitrogen are not coming from wastewater treatment plants, but they're coming from septic systems, you have to do something about it. And so that was their strategy. And so that was their strategy. And I don't agree with a lot of what they put in the regulation, you know, in the Title V regulation. And it's obvious that it was intended to drive people to go into the permit, which really is responsive to a lot of the other comments. And the last thing I'd say just about the TMDL, which is this Total Maximum Daily Load, is that, you know, all of that comes out of an effort that did start 10 or 15 years ago, in which DEP hired UMass scientists to develop these models for every watershed to figure out what were the sources and to develop, you know, models that took into a lot of, a lot of different effects and to come up with this, you know, this concept that if you reduced nitrogen loading to a certain point, you would end up with nitrogen concentrations in the river that would be conducive to a healthy habitat and you would meet the classifications that DEP gives to every river. So every one of our rivers has a classification that says how much oxygen there should be in the water and how much, what the quality of the habitat is. And so the data is old, but it was not a random process. It's not made up at all. It was done by UMass scientists. And although the data is old, I would just say one more thing, the data is old, it may be 10 years old, but in those 10 years, there's a lot more septic systems have gone in. Okay? So, you know, the chances are that in some ways, you know, it's conservative as to what they're saying. I don't think that, I don't think DEP has focused on the right target necessarily in the sense of focusing on nitrogen loading or assuming that in order to fix the problem, you have to retrofit every septic system in every town. But I think there is, there is a logic to what they're doing.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah.
Thanks for your comments, very helpful. Can you comment on the cost of that system that you, they're putting into your town versus a standard system at this point?
Well, I mean, I think that, I think that the, I think the cost range is right, you know, of running somewhere between, you know, 50 and $35,000, $40,000. A lot really depends upon the site. And, but what would be different is that if you had a, if you have a septic system that was built after, installed after 1995, so it's in current compliance with the regulations, then what you would really need to do is just to add a nitrogen-reducting system to, into your, into your current system. If on the, so, you know, that would be at the lower end because you don't have to build a new leach field, you don't have to change your septic tank. A lot of these systems are built to be added on or substituted in. If on the other hand, you have a cesspool and you're starting from scratch, then you're gonna have a 40, you may have a $35,000 or $40,000 system.
The second part of my question, can you comment on how these are working versus a standard system at this point or too early for you?
Well, what we have done is we required, we required owners, which is really the operators. So every, every one of these systems are kind of considered to be like small wastewater systems and they have to have an operator who maintains it. Okay? So there are costs that are associated with. It means there are electrical costs and there are operating costs. And we had them send all the data to the Barnstable County, I forget what the name of it's called. You can go on their website, you can look up every system, you can look up their performance, you can look at them compared to other systems. They have all these graphs and stuff like that. So, and we have more recently been getting feedback about systems that have not been performing, you know, to the approved level. And, and the process is to kind of, we haven't gotten around to it yet because everything's so busy, but to usually, or hopefully that means that they can go back and tweak their system to improve its performance. So...
Can you provide the name of this company so I can get some...
Yeah. And so, well, we know the systems, I know the systems by, you know, their names like Singular and Advantex and they're, but I don't know the manufacturers, you know, I don't know the manufacturers' names, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
They're out there.
My name's Roger Rochester, I hope you don't mind me starting again. I learned about this, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Affected by this. I want to comment on both of, several things I've heard tonight, but I want to tell you first, I worked with DEP 30 years ago for 20 years, technical assistance and training to wastewater treatment plant operators. And myself, before I retired, held a license to be an operator. I spent, there's been a wastewater treatment plant in Barnstable since the 80s. It was recently updated. I spent a lot of time there, working with them. There are several treatment plants down in the Cape. Your question you just asked, there is a, if you go to the DEP website, there is a link that will give you 34 pages of the approved, the ones that are in the three phases of approval, like this gentleman said, great information, sir, thank you. Real facts, not hearsay, are important to us as we oppose this. We can't sit here and say, oh, there aren't any that aren't working, because you heard that from somebody else. There are some that are working. Out of the 34 that are listed, some were approved, there are about 12 that are approved for nitrogen reduction, and some of those go back to 2000A. And the list is there, the name of the companies, where they're located, they're not all in the state, but they're all on that list. Go to the DEP website and you can track it down. I also made a contact because I heard another, there's nobody that will run these things. There are at least 10 firms that do operation and maintenance on all sizes of wastewater treatment plants. In my other life, I also worked for a fairly significant, one of those, we didn't do homes, but I was also involved in a project of 60 condos in Rochester and has its own little wastewater treatment plant and underground, but they have a person that's a licensed operator and maintenance guy that by permit has to come. And they come and they check it out every month. So there are costs associated with it, but we don't, we don't want to make arguments based on hearsay. We don't want to say things that can be easily struck down and make our argument no good anymore. It's really important that we stay away from that and base any argument we make on facts and data. I'm also a cranberry farmer, so I'm in agriculture. And I can tell you that fertilizer is expensive for those of us in agriculture. And my only fertilizer I put on my cranberry bogs is one that makes the cranberries grow. Because if I put on, on the weeds, the weeds grow. If I put it on the grass, the grass grows. If I put it in the river, it doesn't do anybody any good. If I put too much on my bogs, it makes my bogs grow like crazy, I get no cranberries. So that's true of a lot of people in agriculture about how they treat fertilizers and the other chemicals they use. They're very careful, more so now than ever. So just some insight from my perspective, but thank you for hosting this. This is great. Organization is always the best thing to do.
I can give the, I can give the DEP link for the systems. Because if you, if you, you know, Google search, you know, mass DEP innovative alternative systems, because that's the category that they're treated under, you'll get a link that will give you all that information.
Yes, sir.
Tony Morales, 105 Gaffney Road, just a couple of comments. I'm ignorant to all this stuff, I'll admit that. There are people in here that know far more than I do about this technical data. So, simple question. Has any research been done on reducing nitrogen fertilizers and the impact that that would have? Now, I have green grass on Gaffney Road for about the month of April. After that, since I'm on a well, I don't water my grass. If it turns brown, so be it. My understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone that has the data, that country clubs and golf greens are far more of a polluter than septic systems. Is that true? And if it is true, why is the homeowner being tagged before these folks are?
Anybody want to comment?
So each of the reports has a pie chart of controllable nitrogen that is estimated in each watershed. So for like Slocoms, we can look that up. And some of them, they, I think it has to do with the preparers of the report, they may have used different staff, so they'll break out fertilizers versus ag versus lawns and golf courses. But what's important on fertilizer is that in 2012, the state passed a law and said, if you don't have a fertilizer law on the books as a municipality, you can't. So I don't know of any municipality this side of the canal that had any in the southeast region. So we can't. What's more important is in 2015...
Could you repeat that again? I couldn't hear what you said.
Sorry about that. So in 2012, the Massachusetts Legislature and the governor signed a law saying that if you do not have a municipal ordinance by law regulation for fertilizer, you cannot. Nantucket banned it and, or they highly regulated it. And...
They banned fertilizer or they banned having a regulation?
They highly regulated. I haven't looked at what it is, but it was a quick response by the industry to stop for the communities from taking action. Now, in 2015 about, the legislature required, well, before that. In 2015, EMDAR, Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, they were charged by the state with coming up with plant nutrient regulations. And plant nutrients weren't just fertilizers, it may have been anything that would derive nutrients to plants. So they were charged by the state to come up with regulations for fertilizer, both on ag lands and non-ag lands. Our records request in July of this year to see what enforcement has resulted in the almost seven years since those regulations have been in place, and there has been none. And in one document that we discovered from EMDAR is that they noted that there was no funding attached to the mandate for them to create the regulation, therefore they were not able to onboard staff to police plant nutrients across the entirety of the Commonwealth. So we do have an ability in the state of Massachusetts that hasn't been funded. But we are, we are disabled from being able to do anything locally if we didn't have something in place prior to 2012.
So it seems to me one of the obvious things to look at would be the source of the nitrogen pollution. And you're telling me that our hands are tied. Now, my second comment, if I may, is I've been around long enough to remember a little brown box called an AMAC. And that was about 20 years ago. And we all know if you have a Mac Pro now, what you're capable of doing. That little brown box, I'm an artist, you could basically draw a little stick figure. Today, we've put animators out of business because we have programs, animation programs, that look so realistic that it's changed the film industry in 20 years. What happens if I spend $50,000 and put a system in? In five years from now, somebody comes up with the super system that will eliminate all of it. What am I gonna do? Be asked to spend another $40,000, $50,000 to upgrade my field? The Romans had a working sewer system 2,300 years ago, and here we're sitting talking about leach fields. Has anybody looked at what it would cost to bring us into the 22nd century, or the 21st century, excuse me, with a sewer system? I mean, these leach fields in 15, 20, 30 years, correct me if I'm wrong, someone that knows, are gonna be obsolete again. So whoever the homeowner is, it won't be me, maybe my daughter, my son, so I spend 50, they're gonna have to spend 50, 60, 70 in order to keep in compliance. This is insanity.
I have a quick comment.
I have an answer to that, too. Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. It's, it's 5 o'clock. The meeting next door starts at 6:00. And I think we want to be careful. I think, I think we'd all like to walk out of here with some kind of consensus of what we want to do. So I would recommend that we maybe talk for another 15, 20 minutes, whatever, and then at that point we say, okay. Then we talk about what our goals are and what we can do before that. So I think we ought to just plan on that, keep that in the back of our mind. But these comments are incredible from people. It's just wonderful what people are saying. Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say, the regulation has a partial answer to the question about having to continue to replace your system because more, better technology is, arrives. And, and what it says is that if you put in a system after your, after your estuary has been designated, so you know, so first process is DEP designates your estuary as a nitrogen-sensitive area. If you put in your system after that, you never have to retrofit it again, even though the technology improves.
That's based on the politicians that are in office now. In 20 years, you know as well as I do, that's gonna change.
I mean, the, you know, I think the answer to your bigger question was, you know, why DEP loves centralized wastewater treatment? Because...
21st century. We're still talking about leach fields.
But, you know, but for communities, I'll just speak for Westports, you know, it'd be astronomically expensive and disruptive, you know, because of the lack of density of population and the geography to bring sewer lines, you know, down, you know, from 195, you know, down to Buzzards Bay. And so that's why individual septic systems have been the way that everybody, you know, has gone. And so that's...
That's a rational answer, but the problem is that, that the people that live out in the hinterlands who pay the same amount of taxes as the people that live on Route 6 are being penalized. So we're being penalized because we chose to live in an area that has less density. So I should sell my house and move up to State Road where they have a sewer and let somebody else deal with it? Or just, or just stop people from building houses in low-density areas?
They may think you've got the deal.
I'm still paying the price a little better, so... Yes, sir.
Chris Fay, I'm a resident in Dartmouth. I'm a civil engineer by trade. This is my alma mater. I learned quite a bit about environmental engineering. It's not my expertise at this point, but I will say, I'm happy to see the turnout here. Regional stakeholder engagement is super important in this process. We've got to build a coalition and have some unity amongst these neighboring communities. I'd encourage everyone, if they haven't already, to check out, there's a sub-website on Dartmouth's Board of Health that's collated a lot of information about this subject, including articles, some small video vignettes that Director of Public Health, Chris Meeshaw, has put together. Very informative. I've been very discouraged with mass DEP's behavior in this whole process, as I've been tracking on this for the last couple of months. As someone said, this has been a very clandestine process. It has not been transparent in the spirit of municipal stakeholder engagement. It has been nonexistent. That seemed to be emphasized on DEP's behalf on last night's Zoom meeting. They talked about 2015 timeframe when they started engaging municipalities. That's not what I'm hearing on the local level and from my local leaders here in Dartmouth. You know, there was one video that really stood out at me. And my question is, why has mass DEP waited decades to address this issue when there's been a known problem on Cape Cod? It's very acute down Cape Cod, not so much in our neck of the woods yet. But there was a former DEP employee, and he's a quasi-public official at this point, Andrew Gottlieb, he's on one of the special interest groups that's being catered to on the NSA Subcommittee. And he's a former DEP employee and he was there when Title V regulations came out. Title V had a trigger mechanism built in. You're selling your home while your old cesspool had a failure point. And that's when you were forced to upgrade the Title V. This is just do it now and do it within five years if this mandate comes down. And everything I've heard from DEP officials, the fix is in at this point. This is just posturing on that. Excuse me, sir. It's tough to...
One meeting. Thank you.
It's, it's tough to watch them posture themselves as if this is an open process. And that's part of, you know, their... And that's part of, you know, their core mission statement is the public engagement. The fix is in. They're talking as if this is in the past tense, and it's just a formality that these regs will promulgate after the 30th, the public comment period closes. But this gentleman, Mr. Gottlieb, he's been on the public record, and he stated that DEP knew back when Title V was regulated that this issue was going to happen. So it's like they kicked the can down the road. They're being reactionary to an outside special interest lawsuit. And they're supposed to be the stewards of our clean water, air, and land, and they failed at their mission statement, and they're being reactive at this point. They've acknowledged concerns from many people in the public that the amount of material that these systems would take, the amount of wastewater operators, which has been discussed here, the engineers, the surveyors that would go into getting this together. I think Falmouth, it's like 17,000 systems are needed. So it's going to start on the Cape, and then if they designate an NSA, which is the nitrogen sensitive area for the Slocum and the Westport River, which seems, again, imminent, then we would be like Tier Two here on the South Coast. But there's not enough, supply and demand is far outweighed, and it's kind of crazy to see this. Now, one thing they mentioned last night, these abeyments on these estuaries, particularly at the Slocum River, if you've ever looked at an aerial image of the Slocum, you could go out at Lloyd Demmer State Park, you can go out several hundred feet, and you're in waste deep water. And that's due to shoaling that's happened at the mouth of that river. You've got a lot of sedimentation that has come down the river. The sand is in there, so you see the channel on an aerial. The building of the Gooseberry Island Causeway years ago changed the tidal flow characteristics along that segment of coastline. They're talking about ways of doing flushing into these rivers to allow the tidal flow to go in and out a lot better and more efficiently to flush out some of these impurities. And that seems to me to be a low-hanging fruit type of solution. And they're talking about it, they've done it down the Cape. Why hasn't that been done and addressed on the Slocum? That's a mystery. I'd love to hear them say this. But this process, its lack of transparency, and the fact that, you know, that, again, the fix is in on this, I think that residents are very misinformed on this or underinformed. So I think I'd advocate for public leaders here and the various towns that are at the table to really get the word out there to your constituents, to your residents. We definitely need that legislative help. Appreciate Rep. Marky and Senator Montigny. We need more than that. We need a statewide understanding of this because Western Mass is the last tier that this will see, but there's a lot of septic systems out there. This needs input immediately. If these regs are promulgated, now you're playing catch-up. And that's a tough situation to do. I do think the towns need to look at a legal option on this and pool resources together to try to get ahead of this. One point, too, like, we've got a few communities like Free Town and Westport and, you know, we have a piece of the watershed that we all have stake in. And if you're going to go through the watershed permit, you have to have the communities that share skin in the game on that watershed. They all have to be in agreement as to the watershed permit, call it the agreement or whatever the rules are that are in play there. So with that said, you know, appreciate everybody being here. It's a tough process. This is not going to be solved immediately, but I applaud all of the leaders for kind of doing this coalition building and building a consensus. Thank you.
You know, I can just add to Chris's point. We, you know, we don't talk about the cost a lot. We do a little bit, but if DEP implements this where everybody needs to upgrade their systems in the next five years, right now, they're estimating the cost to be $35,000 to $50,000 for one of these IA systems on a piece of property. Well, that cost is going to be increased by 50% or 100%, easy. And, you know, there's going to be a monopoly because there's going to be a lot of businesses that know people need this, and all the prices are going to go up. We're seeing this with our ARPA funding. It's great to have all this money from ARPA for the government to do these projects, but now we're seeing costs that are just escalating 50 to 100% for construction or infrastructure improvements. So that's another issue that DEP is not bringing up, and they talk about funding mechanisms, but, you know, once this ARPA funding goes away, I don't think there's going to be these big piles of money out there that people can access to upgrade their systems without a cost. And then just one point to the flushing and opening up, you know, rivers. They do do that. It's a very long process. It generally requires installing new bridges, larger culverts. The permitting process for that is years in the making, and it does work. It doesn't work as much as they would like to say it works, but that is just, that's one avenue, and it only helps, I mean, these, the IA systems don't reduce nitrogen 100%. Some of these abeyments need nitrogen reduced 100%. So you would add that in opening up of a bridge or a culvert, and that helps you to get to that 100% at the end. But yeah, that's a good point. And there are some options out there, but they all take a lot of time and years to implement.
DEP is on the record saying that these IA systems are not, they're very confident at this point that this is not the ultimate solution. So one thing I meant to mention-
Chris, I'm going to have to interrupt. A couple bits, I've got a few more.
This is very quick. Mr. Gottlieb had also mentioned that, you know, and he's, to me, he's speaking on behalf of DEP when he's on this Subcommittee, which, again, a lot of open records requests, absolute foot dragging on their part to produce these records as they're obligated to do by law. He's on the record as saying, like, DEP does not want to go the Title V way of requiring these septic upgrades, but they're almost using that as an extortion tactic on the residents to then change the behavior, quote unquote, of local town leadership. So they're subverting like the process here, and they're doing it in all the wrong ways. Thank you.
And that was my point. That's one of the points I wanted to stress, is there's two ways to deal with this. You can either have paper cuts by lemon or paper cuts by line. Choose which one. For the comment that people who are, you know, who have our sewer system is not going to be affected, well, if the municipality decides that it's just going to be up to the homeowner, that they're going to keep their hands off it, all right, then yes. Someone like myself who's on septic, I mean, who's on sewer, I'm not going to have any kind of skin in the game other than maybe border health, time, and budgeting. But the watershed permit going that route, now all of a sudden, I got to have more border health guys, I got to have more regulations, I got to have more of this, more of that to make sure. And then if we don't meet the guidelines, then we're fine. And what's that going to be? So now, all of a sudden, everybody in Dartmouth is going to skin in the game because now, all of a sudden, resources that go for school, for police, for, you know, everything is now being taken away because we're going to deal with this. And that's just, that's what they're doing, is they're forcing, when Gottlieb said, avoid the noise, that's what this was for, is basically saying, we're going to have this so that the municipalities go for the watershed permit because they're not going to want to put the burden on the homeowners. Now we're going to shift, now we're going to shift it to the politics of the local issue. And that's what this is. They're basically passing the buck.
Okay. There's another comment or two? And then if it's okay, I'd like to move to some comments from Mr. Michaud, and then maybe we can talk about what we want to get out of this session, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. My name's Dave Dvignan. I'm on the Kushner Board of Health. I'm not inclined to do the 20-year watershed permit. That's a setup. There's no end to that. That's a money pit. So, but I'm not inclined to force anybody to do it in my town. I'm more than happy to do what Westport's done and implement new innovative technology into new construction because then people can appropriately, you know, budget. You know, what's a $10,000 extra on a $35,000 system if you're building a house with 600 grand, right? It's all common sense. So my question goes to Chris, and no, I'm a board health, right? I'm going to say no on the watershed permit. I'm going to bypass it. And then when they tell me I got to mandate everybody to do an upgrade of their septic, do nothing, what's going to be the repercussions? Do we really know? And if we don't know, we should find out because what if we all band together as towns and, you know, they mandate or they start fining us? Well, we file a lawsuit against DEP collectively of all the towns. We tell them, you can't give us an unfunded mandate. We're better off spending our money on attorneys who we have on retainer anyway, every town does, than being forced. I mean, there are people that, you know, are on fixed incomes. How am I supposed to tell them, oh, not only is your septic 40 years old, you got to put a whole new one in with this treatment and this maintenance involved, you know?
Just tell them to move out because that's what they're going to have to do.
They're going to lose the house, right? So I'm not going to do anything. So I do nothing as a board of health, and I stand, huh, I'm going to get fined by the DEP. Well, to me, that's litigation back. We force it right back their throats. I mean, isn't that where this has got to go? If our legislators don't do what they're supposed to do. We had a meeting last Thursday, public hearing, similar to this, similar to what happened. We had it on tape. Rep. Schmidt showed up, and I told him, you need to stop this right now. And where is Rep. Strauss? He represents us too at the Kushner. I told him, send the video to Rep. Strauss. Can you please do that for him so that he at least sees and hears his constituents from Kushner? Because they have to put the brakes on this. Everything everybody said tonight, most of what I've heard, I agree with, you know? We need to do something. We need to reset it and replan it, and it's, you know, this is insanity.
You know what the special interest groups have gone on the record to say, the resolution that is for the folks that are older or retired and not fixed income? Take out a reverse mortgage. That's on the record.
May I speak to that? I spent 25 years of my life building my own house so I could afford to live where I live. Nobody's going to tell me to take out a reverse mortgage so I can leave my kids zero and give it to somebody who's going to charge me crazy money for a system that isn't going to work. That's my answer to that.
If there's nothing, anybody who has something they really, really want to say, I think it'd be a good time to, Christie, maybe we had a couple of comments, and then after that, we can maybe move on if you have something to say in order, and then we can move on to what are we trying to end this, accomplish here right now?
No, I'll be brief.
Yep.
Yeah, the one thing that troubles me in all of this is that we all want the same thing. We want a better Commonwealth. And what concerns me is, is that, you know, I reached out to Buzzards Bay a few weeks ago to talk with them because I'm like, we've worked so successfully in the past together. I don't want it to seem like we're adversaries. You've got a focus, we've got a broader focus, we all want the same thing. The problem here, it's not each other, but to a certain degree, it's seeming like that where the advocates for clean water, whose sole focus is that for their constituents, is putting us at odds with them. And that is not the case. They've got a singular focus, we've got a broader focus. The problem is, is that we've, unfortunately, I've done a lot of, you know, some people they say bashing of DEP or beating up on DEP. No, I've been focused with my concerns about how the Bureau of Water Resources wastewater section has handled this regulatory endeavor. And, you know, there are all sorts of great things that DEP is doing. You know, here in Dartmouth, they've been serving up Lusquana residents for the last three or four years, and, you know, they're continuing. And I hate that what's going on, you know, here tonight may distract of all those other great aspects of the department. But when we are, you know, concerned about what the advocates want and, you know, what we want, something that is workable, the problem isn't the advocates that are pushing this. The problem is the bad process that brought us here tonight. This rush process, a letter on June 1st where the commissioner at the time said why he was doing this was for the protection of the environment, but four days before, on that same day that I got a call from the Southeast Region, they recorded the official stay order at the Barnstable Superior Court. And nowhere did the department mention that. And the timeline that the department has been keeping up, up until the extension into this new year. So, you know, as we tried to shed some light on some of the documents to see how we got here, they've been dilatory. They've been defiant to public records requests openly. I'll share with any of you my records that support that. The Secretary of State has agreed with that, who's the third party. So between, you know, that June 1st letter, the defiance, and then some other things that we're looking at internally that may get mentioned tonight, we need a better department that serves the people. And, you know, I think that, I said to someone today, I think if we sat down at the table with special interests, you know, I had a very productive conversation with Ms. Peterson at Buzzards Bay, I bet you we could come up with something quite workable, on paper at least. But we're in this rush process with all sorts of concerns. We've got everyone pointing back to the septics that put us into this convoluted watershed permit, and I appreciate Mr. Dvignan's comment about the watershed permit. I like the idea of watershed planning, and this is not an individual's approach where one person says it. Stakeholder like this is much more important. Because when I look at the Apone Ganset Report that was done many years ago, there was something in there on page 17 that's very concerning. It applauded Dartmouth for doing all these wonderful things to remove nitrogen. But the preparer said it's only going to slow the nitrogen increase. So if we're reducing existing load, it's only going to slow, and we know that Apone Ganset is still in trouble. So the idea of the watershed permit process holding us to a performance standard and testing is, as Mr. Gottlieb said, putting a noose around our necks. Because even if DEP exercises some discretion, we know that we're still open to third-party litigation, and that third-party litigator, the most famous one is the Conservation Law Foundation, and they've done it up and down the Cape against non-performers to standards. So, you know, I go back to, I think, planning with opportunities for funding and maybe opportunities for other benefits, maybe a better approach. But we all lost the opportunity to collectively gather and put this in, and we're being dealt with this rushed approach. So I'm not going to talk about the technicalities beyond what I just said. You've all have heard too much from me, so that'll be it.
Thank you. You can see how lucky we are to have a fellow like him around, all of us.
I think the regions.
Yep. By my calculation here, we have representatives, some are town employees, some are residents from Dartmouth, Free Town, the Kushner, Westport, and Rochester. And I think we have, don't have anyone here from, correct me if I'm wrong, Fairhaven, New Bedford, Marion, Matapoiset, and Wayham, if we just take that block. I know we're talking about a very expansive area, but if we look at the areas from, and we could go to Swansea and we just keep going, but we are, we are, we are, we have. So we have a pretty good representation here, that's, which is great. And anybody want to, I think we know the issue. We've kind of, we've kind of stated the obvious here, and so let's try to focus, if you all agree, that let's talk about what do we want to produce out of this meeting? Maybe something come up out of that as well, but let's talk about it.
I think, I think the intent of the meeting was to basically get, you know, the governmental aspect of the communities together to find, to basically say, look, we got to approach this in a regional manner, and I think that's the way to go. Right now, we have more representation from board of healths than we do select board or council. So I think I'm going to throw it to the board of healths. I think the board of healths, the representatives that are here, need to go back to their boards and say, look, and report back as to what we're looking to do, and maybe have the board of health directors or staff get together and formulate a letter, a joint letter, and invite other, Fairhaven and Somerset and whoever, whoever you can invite. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think City of New Bedford is going to be interested. And at least to get something out, you know, within the next seven days or before the comment period. The intent, the letter from Marky and Montigny to extend the comment period was born out of our meeting. I made the motion to basically ask the DEP to hold up on the comment period until June 30th and not to implement this until at least 2024, and give us a year breathing space. Well, we got 30 days out of it, only because Marky and Montigny sent the letter. But that- But that extended comment period still fit within the court timeframe. It wasn't going beyond that. So now I know why they chose January 30th or 31st. So I think what needs to be done is, is the Board of Health need to get together, and I think what we'll do at Monday night at our meeting, we're going to put it on the agenda, that we're going to contact the select boards of the communities that are here and also other communities to at least, let's formulate a letter saying, you know, slow down. We want to do something, but this is not the way to do it. And I think that's, I, I think that's the approach. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've been wanting to do a regional meeting for the longest time, you know, and this is mostly for, it was mostly for purchasing power and how to do things better in our government, you know? Who thought that it was going to take, you know, kind of a crappy, you know, a crappy incident to bring us all together? Okay? And I, I just, I so want to, I so much want to push, I really, I'm French and Irish and Portuguese, man, you know? I, I want so much pushback. I'm an ex-bouncer, you know? You're going to swing at me, I'm going to take a swing at you. And, you know, that's the way, you know, I want to go at this. But I have people in my ear saying, you know, step back a little bit, mostly my wife. You know, just to, and I understand the process, but you know, at some point in time, we cannot be nice. You know, we cannot be nice. You know, they want to play dirty, okay? We can play that game too. And right now, I think the best, best approach would be to get the Board of Health together, to get the directors, maybe, you know, you guys know all each, you guys know all phone numbers and emails. Get together and come up with a joint letter and we'll do the same on, on the select board end. You know, and maybe at least with that, we'll also contact our, we'll ask them to contact Schmidt and Strauss and whoever else it needs to be, you know, Pacico and whatever.
Okay. The only thing on that is, you know, out of all fairness, you know, while I do work here in Dartmouth, you know, I, I really am timid about, you know, taking any role in that directly because I do live in Westport. You know, we do have members here from Westport tonight and, you know, I really try to stay, you know, Westport River watershed is here in Dartmouth. But, you know, I really take, I think it'd be appropriate for me to take a subordinate role in that, just because I don't want to seem like I'm trying to step out into the territories of Westport. I live there, you know, I just got to make sure I maintain my.
Why don't, why don't we just take a few minutes and go around and I saw some other hands about some of the other tactics and then we can maybe blend them together.
And I'll just, to your, to your point, sir, my select board is the Board of Health. And so they allowed me full voice for them tonight. I briefed them on the ongoing issues. They know about it. I've sent them information. They apologized they couldn't be here. The town administrator couldn't be here either. She's gone to surgery. So the bottom line is, I think they, they support the efforts of slowing down this. I think they, they, they support the efforts of taking a more measured approach. They've spoken out loud relative to, to, I think, some of the points. We understand new construction, okay? You can budget for that, you can accommodate that. We understand in certain upgrades or repairs, okay? But to mandate somebody that's got an active system that works fine and, and, and they're not in favor of that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, just throw it out, you know, we're, we're talking DEP all the time because that's what's in our face. But apparently, we, we all know that there's been some sort of, some sort of lawsuit. Some of us know more about it than others. But why not get our legal team together to go after the judge or go after whatever the outcome of that, that lawsuit was and work it from that direction and see if there's some way that we can actually extend this out to that year or into something else.
I would like to spring off my colleague's comment. The most important issue here, I think, is that we have a deadline of the 30th to respond in some form. This is not going to be a, this is not a sprint, this is a marathon because it's going to, this is not going away for a while. I, I would like to see coming from, not from the Board of Health, but from the select boards, if many towns want to participate. Tell them there are other choices here and we need to slow down, whatever the message is. And then we could go out and contact the boards and whoever wants to jump in with us to get a message out right away in any town, then we include them on that. And there aren't that many. If we get a yes or a no, and we give them a deadline and say, this is it. And I think coming from the, from the board of select, the select board of the municipality would be effective because I, we've sent out some beautiful letters from the Board of Health, and I think Chris has made a great point about there's, there's some conflicts of interest here that you have to be careful. But I think we can construct a short letter and why are we, what are we trying to prove? That we are ready to band together. The message is clear. We're, we're in this together. And after the 30th, this is just a comment period is all it is. And then I think that there's going to be hell to pay after that, and that's we can jump in and be, or be the legal discourse, whatever we take, I think that it'll, it'll become pretty clear what we need to do. But I, I think our goal is to get the message out as quick as possible from as many towns who want to participate with us.
I agree, Dave. We have scheduled a meeting for the 30th and nothing from today till the 30th. So we'd have to have some other meetings to iron this out, but it should come from the select board. And we can address all the other select boards in the region, all the people that have come here from Westport and where, send out a letter, like we sent the invitation out to all of you. Get it out, it needs to be strong and clear and have Maki and Montigny involved in it.
Would you like us, I can get a letter from the Board of Health and from the Board of Selecting. Would you like us to forward to the town administrator for you?
Yes, yes, thank you.
We'll do that.
I think we need to just blend something together. Doesn't have to be long.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Name?
Mike Dallio, I'm a Dartmouth resident.
Okay, so am I, Mike.
I, I, yes. I asked a question at the meeting last night and they, they circled, basically did a circle around. And the question is, what is the legal basis for, for a bureaucratic entity, they're not legislators, to mandate something on taxpayers that's going to be an immediate cost out of pocket for fully functioning homes? That's like somebody telling me that the electrical system in my house is defective and I have to replace all the wiring in it right now.
Okay, same.
It's the same thing. What, what, what basis do they have? Because I've read Title V and I couldn't find anything in there that says that they can force you to change a septic system that's perfectly functioning now because they feel like it. That's just out there. I'm trying to get an answer on that and that's a legal question.
We'll get it from DEP.
I understand that, but, I mean, to me, it's a class action suit waiting to happen.
I'm going to make sure that we narrow this if we can to make sure we come up with a later on final.
This gentleman, I take him back.
I'm sorry, back here? Yes, sir, sorry.
Cowtown, Rhode Island, I've been an agent since 81. You're, you're seated, just send for just a short letter to your representatives, get your sleuthman on board. I was the chairman for eight years at the Board of Health also. You know, and I got a great board, sewer operator, so I can do, but I've got a few things in there.
I'm impressed.
But one, one thing that hasn't been discussed, and I go along with the letters and you've got to get the second one more, you've got to get your representative on board. One thing that hasn't been discussed is, how is, how are the health departments going to enforce, force everybody into doing this? This gentleman here is going to need five officers, the ten people in each office to be going to court every day to make them do it. We've got a couple other agents here, so they can sympathize to what I'm saying.
Yep.
Anytime you get a leaky system, Chris, I want to take you again and fix it. Yeah, you don't answer.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, the first word what I heard about these regulations to Jaron Martin was, be very careful because this may be unveiling of a paper tiger.
Oh, yeah. You know, the enforcement, now, how are you going to enforce it? There was a couple of comments that Kushner said that there, oh, we're not going to do it. So you've got 25,000 systems, how are you going to do it? How clogged are the court system going to be for all the filings that are going to go there? You know, all the comments from the residents on the other side, oh, I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to take a reverse mortgage, which doesn't solutions and stuff, but, yeah, it's got to slow down. It is necessary, all of Chris's comments, I totally agree with his comments. But, you know, the enforcement for the agency side, are you going to have five more people in your health department to chase them down? Yeah, you can't get a half-time, part-timer to help you do anything, so how are you going to get another?
The next full-time employee in my health department will be the first one.
Yeah.
Chris, thank you very much for your comment. I'm sorry I didn't see you back here.
That's okay. David, I, I think now's the time to start thinking beyond the 30th as well, right? It sounds like there's a concentrated effort to, for all these municipal stakeholders to get on the same page by the 30th when public commentary closes. But I'd like to see the formation of a working group between these entities that have skin in the game. And look at, you know, again, exploring legal options. You know, I know we've got our own town council that's dealt with some environmental issues in town, but now's the time to look at someone who's got specificity, specificity to DEP issues and Conservation Law Foundation issues. And I, I do have a recommendation from that, from, from the industry. This is the time to start to look into that because these, we're not in a designated NSA yet. We're, we're the next tier on the, on the South Coast, right? It's, it's on the other side of the canal, this will happen immediately. But they're going to take our comments, they're going to read that, but this is, this is, the fix is in. So now it's time to start thinking about beyond the 30th and making sure that we're coalescing as adjacent communities and having skin in this game, so.
Okay, great. I, just, we just had a mini-meeting conversation and I think that, what I think we can do, and this is, I have the input on that, is construct a letter that we can agree on and send it out, right, to the powers that be, which are the, the, mostly select boards in the city of New Bedford. And whoever wants to jump on board, we give them a date, what's going to be. And the idea is, the message is clear, that we're together, we're not going away, and we're in for the long haul, whatever that might be. Sean's, I think Sean's totally capable of doing that. And we will circulate that and get it out and we'll, we'll try to get the, the enforcement from every town.
We'll also continue this process to make sure that we, we do form this coalition.
Oh, no doubt.
It's about time. To be honest with you, it's about time this region gets together and speaks with one voice, you know? I mean, it doesn't in some areas, you know, and they get things done, it's, it's time to South Coast do it.
We meet, yeah, we meet again on the 30th and what that meeting will have on our agenda, the, what we think should be the next, and we, a next move, and it would probably be a legal one, and then we'll, we'll circulate that to the towns and hopefully we can, we can meet again. And maybe, it might even have to be by Zoom, but we'll meet again with the powers that be. Sir?
Joe, please, Doc, this is 86. Quick question. I'm relatively moved of this, this issue on offer. Is there any test data that supports this that actually says that this area is directly polluting the bay? Test wells, have they provided any of that data?
Definite.
The reports, the, the data tied to the reports is within the, the waterway itself. They don't do any, that I've seen any groundwater monitoring, you know, that, you know, is inland. It's based on a lot of modeling. And I'm not, it's not a criticism on the modeling at all. You do have to make some assumptions. But the problem becomes that, if you had to ask me for a quick second, as I've looked at a lot of these reports along the Cape, I guess my criticism is, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out where the nitrogen's coming from, and all these reports take a lot of time. Scientists need the time to do this. But in the meantime, we, we've got the data that shows that there's an impairment, and rather than look to those, you know, all right, we know that this is a source of nitrogen, that's a source of nitrogen irrespective of how much it is, go after it. So that's one of the problems, is that it just, it is, for example, here in the Dartmouth watershed, there are some new sources of nitrogen that wasn't here. And that's, in my opinion, based on what records we have, if they're reviewable. And DEP says, well, that's a new source of nitrogen, that's going to have to be addressed separately. But it just, it points to the problem that these reports, they try to be very comprehensive in, you know, looking at how many lots, how many homes, what's the projected load from that. This, they're doing the best they can because they actually got septic monitor wells. Well, I, we're going to blow up the cost, that would be cheaper just to install sewers.
Can I just, just because I'm lame in this?
Yep.
Everybody that has a well, has a test call. Everybody can pull a water cell, a well for 300 bucks or 200 bucks over in Middle Bar, which is what I did. I bet 450 pulled well surrounded by 10 houses, all with gorkin septic system. My nitrogen level is not inconsistent, okay? So when I look at, like, the Cape and these areas and areas that are on waterways, utilization of high nitrogen fertilizers, to me, would be a direct result of high nitrogen weather. If you want to really try and make an impact on this really quickly, ban nitrogen fertilizer from laws and adding nitrogen to the area to start with. If you've got a working system and it's not going into the test wells that are surrounding it, where's it coming from?
There's no doubt that fertilizer and composting and, and the water treatment, these are solutions that were not part of what the mandate is, and that's where the next step's going to come for us, you can see it coming.
That's where it's coming.
Yeah. And that's not, we, we need to do this, this is immediate, we've agreed it, and I think this is a step one, but step two, three, four, and five, I got to keep coming, and that's, that's apparent. Anybody else?
20 minutes to go.
20 minutes to go?
19, actually.
We're going to, the servant and supper, aren't they tonight? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the servant has one.
Right. Well, when we spoke of this at our meeting, our select board meeting, and we tossed it around, we hope and prayed that something is good going to come out of this, and my expectations were kind of high, but we've exceeded our expectations. We are so grateful for everyone who showed, the comments made. We're a team, we're going to make it happen, and this thing can only build because we're going to get more people informed and then to join us. And I, I, we sincerely appreciate everyone being here and, and we're ready for the dog and pony show, but we're prepared too, so. Anybody else before we go?
Take a deep breath.
Yeah, David?
Yes.
So John Mongi, I live in Dartmouth. I grew up in Westport. I've worked for Viola Water, Suez Water, I currently work for Weston and Sampson, I'm a grade seven wastewater operator. I ran the Taunton wastewater treatment operations up there for a while. The city was, was hit by a low nitrogen permit and which I think it might have cost them over $100 million to upgrade that facility.
Taunton?
Yeah, Taunton. And, but, but, and the city fought it, and they had PhDs, they had lawyers, all on their side, that made a lot of sense and had updated sampling results, but the DEP decided to use the 2005 sampling results from Al Ho Bay before those cooling towers were put in at Brayton Point. And now there's no Brayton Point. But they still used that information, like you had said, they focused on that old data because it works to their advantage. And so be prepared, is my advice. Also, to what you said, the wastewater and water industry, there are so many open positions at these companies, you can't find wastewater and water. I don't, I, my, both my kids go to VOTEC, and they did away with the wastewater, with the, with the environmental part of that, for whatever reason. So trying to find an operator to service and sample your wastewater systems is going to be very difficult in the future. And so how often are you going to have to sample to make sure that your septic system is, is taking away the nitrogen, is, is reducing your nitrogen? How often is that going to happen? There's tremendous cost to lab sam, to sampling and testing and all that too. So these are just considerations.
Our answer to that is this coalition. We're not going to do it alone, any one town. Taunton, Bailey, Taunton didn't fail, but we need to be a team, a team that wants clean water to succeed, not a team that's going to whine and cry that we don't want to do anything. And that's, to me, that's the most important issue.
In the ultimate, we should be pushing to the state hub, not just counties, not just counties, regions. Because the whole state's impacted, yeah. There's some people out west are getting injured.
We got a new governor and she needs to make some changes over here.
Anybody else?